The opening prayer will be given by Councilman Paul Riddick, and then please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening as umly as we know how, thanking you for all the blessings you have bestowed upon us as a city, and all the citizens that reside within. We thank you for the youngsters gathered here tonight. It certainly brightens our spirit, and certainly we hope that we can give them some encouragement. During this time of the year when people have so many expectations, and so many people have little or nothing, we ask you to touch those families and give them the same comfort, or as much as possible, for those persons who have more. We ask you to give us the ability to do this job in a fair and just manner. These are all the blessings we ask in thy name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag-
To the flag of the United States of America- And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you all very much. The clerk will please call the roll.
That would've been nice if we could have a little-
Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Here.
Mr. Riddick?
Here.
Mr. Smigel?
Here.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Here.
Mr. Frame?
Here. The motion is to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting.
Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Norfolk City Council chambers. We're glad to have all of you here. For your benefit, the process which will follow for tonight's meeting is we have a couple of ceremonial matters which we'll move to first. Following that, we'll move directly to the public hearings. We have several of them on tonight's agenda. There are five of them. At the conclusion of the public hearings, we'll move to the consent agenda. There are four items there. The council has the ability to vote on all those four matters at one time if it wishes. We then will move to the regular agenda. There are a number of items there. There are thirty-two matters on the regular agenda. At the conclusion of the regular agenda, and we'll vote on all of those matters in just the way they are numbered and printed on the order. We'll vote on them in the way they are numbered and printed on tonight's printed docket. At the conclusion of the agenda, if any member of the public would like to address the city council on a non-agenda item, that's something that's not on this docket, you'll be given that opportunity. But in order to have your name called, you've got to sign a slip of paper, which the clerk has made available in the rear of the council chambers, actually out in the lobby before the meeting began. Nobody did that. So if you're down here and you want to speak to the council at the end of the meeting, please sign up a slip of paper so I'll have it in front of me in order to call your name. That's unique, especially for a night meeting, for no one to want to speak to us. But in any event, thank you for being here. First of all, I want to apologize for this late start here. We'll try to make up some time as we move through the docket. The city council has been busy all day long. It's going to have been a historic day here in Norfolk. We started, some of us at 10:30 this morning on the way to Ettrick. Ettrick?
Etterick.
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 Etterick, Virginia, and Chesterfield County to get on a train to come down here. And we've been involved with members of the Amtrak Board and the governor for this great celebration when passenger rail starts again tomorrow morning in the city of Norfolk. So excuse us, but we have been doing the city's business almost all day long here. Before we get to the formal agenda, we've got a couple of resolutions here. And I know we've got a nice group here from the city administration. The city council has a resolution that it wants to vote on, actually, in regards to Lake Taylor High School football team winning the state championship. How cool is that? But is that the best? So first of all, maybe we could get the group who's here, Latonya, Dr. Latonya Simmons, who's a deputy superintendent for operations with you and school leadership development, Dr. Denise Charbonnet, who's executive director for secondary schools, if you'll come forward, Mr. Stefan Stutmiller, who's the public schools athletics coordinator. Good to have you here. Elizabeth Mather, who's director of communications. Bob, you're going to get up here. I mean, you're the A.D. man. Who else is going to be up here? The coach?
Head football.
Yeah, I see the coach Sawyer down here. Coach, I didn't see you there for a second. I don't know how I missed you. How are you doing?
Okay.
First of all, let me tell you how, you know, and I've got their people here who are going to say after I say it, but I am sure of that, how thrilled, how proud we are of not only a state championship, but also how well your young men conducted themselves before and after the ballgame. And their great credit to Lake Taylor, but to the city of Norfolk as well. I was a senior in high school. I remember back in 1967. I guess it was Granby won the state championship. Sixty-six, sixty-six, that's right. It was the football year, season of sixty-six, when they won the championship, and how exciting that was in the city back then. But I'm not sure it compares to what, to this team, and how well it's performed all year long. So let me read the resolution. Council's going to vote on it, and then I understand maybe there might be a, there's a pep rally later on Monday at 2 o'clock here, 1 o'clock?
1:00.
1:00, Bob. Okay, great. All right. It reads, "Whereas the Lake Taylor Titans varsity football team made history during the 2012 season when they defeated the Stonebridge Bulldogs from Loudoun County by a score of 20 to 14 in the Group AAA Division V State Championship played in Charlottesville on December the 8th at the University of Virginia Scott Stadium, whereas this achievement marked the first state football championship won by a Norfolk Public High School since 1966. Whereas under the leadership of head coach Hank Sawyer and his staff, the Lake Taylor Titans finished with a perfect 15-0 record." Fifteen-oh record that included 54-0 shutout over Phoebus. We had to put that in, no doubt. The Eastern District Finals, and a 23-21 victory. By the way, I tried to get to that game. I was turned away. You know that, Bob. They wouldn't let me. And the place was packed in the- And a 23-21 victory over North Stafford in the Group AAA Division V semifinals. Whereas in earning their well-respected state championship, the Lake Taylor Titans football team represented the city of Norfolk ably and well throughout the entire season, bringing recognition to themselves and the city. And now therefore be it resolved, Section 1, that the council of the city of Norfolk hereby congratulates the Lake Taylor Titans varsity football team on the occasion of winning the state football championship for Group AAA Division V. And Section 2, that this resolution be recorded in the permanent proceedings of the city council, and that a copy thereof be presented to Coach Sawyer and his team. So, Mr. Clerk, why don't you call the roll here?
Adopt the resolution, Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Now, Coach, sorry, can I give you this? And some of my council members probably want to, I know they want to say a couple of things to you. Congratulations, Coach. We're very, very grateful.
I would just like to say to the city of Norfolk, to its citizens, to all the teachers and every football player in the city of Norfolk, I am truly grateful to represent your city. And it has been challenging, but it has been great. And to make history means the world to me because I am, you know, I'm a resident of Norfolk, and I'm a product of the public school system here. And I just thank each and every one of you all and all citizens of Norfolk. Thank you.
Well, you know, Coach Sawyer, I just want to, we've had your wife here.
Right.
That's right.
She celebrated a state championship, and it's great to have you here. I know you weren't going to let out, do you? But more importantly, not only, you know, you've been, you've been an icon to the young people at Lake Taylor for so many years. There are so many teams, great teams, that you've had that have gone 10-0 and lost in the playoffs. But I think the one thing that I take away from your body of work is the number of kids that you've been able to send on to college to get a four-year education. And a lot of these kids, they don't go to just any college. They go to big schools, you know, and they do well.
Thank you.
And so thank you for not just teaching them about the game of football, but teaching them about the game of life, and ensuring that these young men have the academic tools they need to be successful and move on. So thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Honestly, I'd like to say, Coach, with all the tragedies and horrors stirred here with athletics today, I'd like to commend you on having a good bunch of student athletes and the character that they represent for Lake Taylor and the city of Norfolk. And we thank you so much for that.
Thank you.
One thing, is that a basketball shirt you got on?
Yes, the day is girls' basketball team. And my wife made me put this sweat. And I want to live in harmony.
Say one quick thing. I was-
Just fart man.
I was out there Friday morning for a little while before y'all left, and I couldn't, as both of my colleagues have said, I wasn't very impressed by the caliber of young men. I knew their parents had a lot to do with it, and the teachers had a lot to do with it. But I know their coaches had a lot to do with it, and they all came by, shook hands. They had a tight grip, and they looked us in the eye. And you've got a fine group of gentlemen. And I know that what you've given them, they're going to take with them the rest of their lives. And really appreciate the commitment you've made.
Thank you so much, sir.
I just, I spoke to the principal, I guess, yesterday morning, and called to congratulate her, and she said for me to remind everybody this was the fully accredited Lake Taylor.
That is correct.
The high school.
That is correct, and that is important.
That's very important to her. That was, you know, that was every bit as important as anything else, so I thought I would mention that.
Okay.
One of your comments in the paper about, you know-
You've got to learn to work that thing.
This thing off. About, you know, we put a hat on it, you know, about the physical, mental toughness piece that you teaches. I mean, it's really, I thought, was telling, you know. I used to, that your kids would flock to the football and play hard. One of the, one of the young men was quoted in the paper saying that the coach looked worried, and that-
He was correct.
But he, but he was- He said, "But we had his back," and he said, "We always have his back." And I think that's at volumes about how the team felt about you as well as. So, you know, I've been thinking about the stadium out there. And, you know, the one thing that you don't have out there is you don't have a facility to gather yourself before the ballgame or after the ballgame.
No, we don't have a fieldhouse.
You don't have a fieldhouse. It seems to me like a state champion ought to have a fieldhouse.
Oh, my God. Thank you. That would be great. If we could get a fieldhouse, that would be great.
If we can get the vice mayor's support-
You got my-
And we can probably get some done. The manager won't have any trouble finding money in the budget to get out.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
At the same time, we've got to do the same thing for Booker T.
That is correct.
Because they're the only two left that don't have that fieldhouse.
Well, because I'm a graduate of Booker T. Washington High School, so that makes me joyful about that also.
Okay.
Now I understand why you are such an outstanding coach.
Well, thank you.
Graduated from Booker T.
We're going to try to make that happen in addition.
I appreciate it, and Norfolk is a great place. And it is a great place to live in and work in and to be educated in. And I remember Dr. Whibley, when she was on the school board, you know, I had a chance to meet her a few times. It made my heart feel good when I saw her sitting up there.
Thank you. Makes my heart feel even better with you there.
Thank you.
All right. Well, we'll see you at the pep rally.
Okay. Thank you so much.
And we're talking, we haven't finished our plans yet. I know it's Christmas, and it's the holiday season, but we ought to have a way to celebrate-
We'll get the kids.
The city, you know, even if we, I don't know, we had a parade or something. I mean, we've got to do something right, okay? We haven't done this since, you know-
Sixty-six, huh?
All right. Well, thanks very much.
And thank you all again, and thank you all out here.
Okay. Here is another really important resolution as well, which has received national honors. And we have Gail Easley, the executive director of the Christmas Addicts Cultural Center here. And Lisa Chandler is here. She's the board chair. Gail, you want to come, Gail? Lisa, you want to come to the podium? Can you do that? Okay. All right. Listen to this resolution, okay? It reads, "Whereas the rhythm and setting expectations program, known as RISE, engages young people aged seven to seventeen in significant exposure to the arts as a way to develop positive values, healthy habits, and skills they need to be effective at home, at school, and at work. Whereas since 2005, RISE has provided services to 2,200 young people from across Hampton Roads at its home in the historic Christmas Addicts Theater, giving them an understanding and appreciation for African-American Caribbean and other African, okay, diaspora experiences." How'd I do, Gail? "Spirit classes and workshops. Whereas RISE was recently selected from a pool of more than 350 nominations and 50 finalists as one of 12 recipients of the 2012 National Arts and Humanities Youth Program Award, the highest honor awarded to such programs in the United States." Let me read, I'm going to read that one again, okay? "Whereas RISE was recently selected from a pool of more than 350 nominations and 50 finalists as one of the 12 recipients of the 2012 National Arts and Humanities Youth Program Award, the highest honor awarded to such programs in the United States. Whereas on November 19th, 2012, First Lady Michelle Obama presented the award to RISE, dance student Tiffany Prigram, and RISE director Gail Easley in a White House ceremony. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of council that hereby expresses its pride in this achievement and extends warm congratulations to the RISE program. Its staff and students are receiving the prestigious 2012 National Arts and Humanities Youth Program Award. Section 2, that this resolution shall be in effect from and after its adoption, and a copy thereof be presented to the RISE program." Okay, call the roll, please.
Okay, adopt the resolution, Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. It's unanimous, guys. Here, you want to take this? Okay. Gail, congratulations. My buddy right there. She delivered the invitation to me in my office to come. By the way, I was at the program the other night. It was wonderful. I don't know if you're going to comment on that, at the Addicts, the Nutcracker, which was an absolutely terrific, terrific program. So, Gail, please. Lisa, do you want to say something?
Thank you. Yeah, it was our honor, absolute and honor and privilege to work with our children. And the Second Annual Addicts Nutcracker was a total success, and we certainly look forward to many more in the future.
On November- Easter program.
That's right. We are going to work on that right away.
Okay. All right. Okay.
On November 19th, 2012, Tiffany Prigram, 14 of Norfolk, and I were honored to be invited to the White House to receive a National Arts and Humanities Youth Program Award from First Lady Michelle Obama on behalf of the Christmas Addicts Cultural Center, which was recognized for its effectiveness in developing learning and life skills in young people by engaging them in the RISE Rhythm and Setting Expectations program housed at the Addicts Theater. Having the chance to represent Norfolk in accepting this award from the First Lady of the United States at the White House was an experience that I'll never, ever forget. And we hope that this award will draw attention to the documented fact that programs like ours are essentially investments, not just in the lives of our young people, but in our community as well. We're incredibly proud of this achievement and of the young people, the volunteers, supporters, board, and staff who made it possible. I am deeply grateful to Mayor Frame, city manager Marcus Jones, and to city council for their generous, ongoing support for recognizing the importance of the Christmas Addicts Cultural Center RISE program to the cultural fabric of Norfolk. And I feel I've been given a gift. Every child that walks through the doors of the Addicts Theater is a gift, as you can see standing before you. I feel I've won, but it wasn't won single-handedly. I didn't just win this award for myself. We won the award for the children, the teens, the parents and guardians, the teaching artists, the educators, our partners, our mentors, and the city of Norfolk. We will proudly take this with us wherever we go. Thank you.
Thank you.
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Well, thanks for-
She said it all.
Okay. Gail, Lisa, thank you. I mean, the program is becoming what I think this council many years hoped it would become. Mrs. Pigram? I saw the video at the White House with Michelle Obama hugging everybody. I mean, it was, that was a great moment, I know. But the program, I mean, the facility there is really developing in a way that we'd hoped it would, especially with your leadership, and Lisa, with the board raising money. You know, Mr. Manager, we've got to find a way to better sustain these, the efforts. I mean, even like this breakfast with Santa thing you did the other day. I know how important that was to, was it, how many kids, 300?
300, yeah.
300 kids you had for breakfast. I mean, that's a, that's a wonderful experience with some of those kids that they wouldn't otherwise get if it weren't for the facility being there. So thank you for that, and thanks to the kids, and, you know, we're awfully proud of you. Okay? Thanks for coming down. Okay.
It's been an honor.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you all. Okay, well, what's that? Yes, I forgot this. Tom, where are you? There you go. I'm sorry, Tom. Peggy, if you want to come up, come forward. I didn't put you down as a ceremonial matter because it's not exactly a ceremony. You're not getting a award, but you're giving things, though. Yeah, okay. This is the 2013 Historical Calendar, which is a fundraiser for the Library Foundation. And Peggy, Tom, who do you, who wants to?
That's correct. I bring you greetings from the library and presents, too. It is the 2013 Norfolk Library Foundation's Norfolk Historical Calendar. It's the sixth in a series, so we're pretty sure we can call it an annual event now. If you all feel free to flaunt it around and show it to people if they would like to order copies, my phone number's on the back. And all of the proceeds go towards the sergeant collection of the library, where most of the pictures and information come from.
Right. And make great little gifts, too.
They do.
Right.
At that time of season. So we want to thank you again for your continued support of the library and all it's done, especially with this new structure being built downtown. It will truly be part of what makes Norfolk great. And we want to thank you for your help and your supportive act.
Tom, thank you for hanging in there for so long with the foundation as well. Peggy, you too. I know this is your creation. We appreciate that. Okay.
Exciting. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks very much. Okay. Now down to business. We'll call, let's call public hearing number one, please.
Public hearing one scheduled for this day pursuant to action of council on November 13, 2012, to hear comments on the issuance of Series 2012 Waste Water System Revenue Bonds of up to $12 million for partial funding of the cash flow needs of the Waste Water Utility Fund Capital Improvement Program.
All right. There's no one here to address the council on this matter. If there are no questions from the council, you can call the roll.
I have an ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale by the city of Norfolk of Waste Water System Revenue Bonds in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $12 million to finance Waste Water System capital improvements. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Public hearing two.
Public hearing two scheduled for this day pursuant to action of council on November 13, 2012, to hear comments on the issuance of Series 2012 Water System Revenue Bond of up to $60 million for partial funding of the cash flow needs of the Water Utility Fund Capital Improvement Program. I have an ordinance for that to authorizing the issuance and sale of up to $60 million in water revenue bonds by the city of Norfolk dispensing the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Public hearing three.
Public hearing three scheduled for this day pursuant to action of council on November 13, 2012, to hear comments on a lease agreement between the city and the Garden of Hope, Inc., on property located at 2715 Stan Hope Avenue.
Okay, we're ready to vote on this matter tonight. And there's no one signed up to speak, so we can call the roll.
I have an ordinance approving a lease agreement with Garden of Hope, Inc., as lessie, for the second floor of the property known as Stan Hope House at 2719 through 2721 Stan Hope Avenue in the city of Norfolk. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Public hearing four.
Public hearing four scheduled for this day to hear comments on the sale of land from the city of Norfolk to Hampton Road Sanitation District located along the south side of the VIP Treatment Plant in Lambert's Point. I have an ordinance authorizing the sale of a certain parcel of property located on the south side of 43rd Street in the city of Norfolk to Hampton Road Sanitation District for the sum of $155,000 in the purchase and sale agreement. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Public hearing five.
Public hearing five scheduled for this day to hear comments on the sale of city-owned property on 21st Street to 21st Partners LLC for the development of commercial office and retail.
All right. We've got a few people who've signed up to address the council on this matter. All I ask is when I call your name, if you come to the podium, identify yourself for the record by giving us your full name and your present home address. Then please limit your remarks to three minutes. Bob Stanton.
My name is Robert M. Stanton. I live at 4141 First Court Road in Virginia Beach. I'm here to speak in behalf of the 21st Street Project. I am part of the development team. Together with Robinson Development and Stanton Partners, we are the development team for this project. We've had almost 40 years of experience in developing properties We've had almost 40 years of experience in developing properties throughout the eastern United States, and particularly here in Norfolk, and I'd like to run through just a few of them. We started back in the mid-'70s building homes in Gant Square and built 70 houses there during the period that Gant Square was being built out. We bought the Norfolk Drive-In Theater, which many of you may remember when it was showing sort of illicit movies on Virginia Beach Boulevard and I-64. And the city put Popular Hall Drive through the property. We subdivided it into small parcels, and it's a fully-built-out commercial park at this time. We built the World Trade Center at the end of Main Street, when Main Street was nothing like what it was today. Some of you may remember that back in the early '80s. We then built Riverside Corporate Center at the intersection of I-64 and Military Highway. The Town Point Building at the, on Bush Street and Plume. The FBI Regional Headquarters were built at Riverside Corporate Center. We built 150 Main at the corner of Bush Street and Main Street. We helped Dominion Enterprises through the development process on their building on Granby Street. We built the Harbor Heights Mixed-Use Complex at College Place and Bush Street. We have had an extensive run of experience in Norfolk, and we emphasize this, not to boast, but merely to emphasize that when we start a project, we get it to the finish line, and we're confident we can do that with the 21st Street Project. I'd like to ask my partner, Chris Sanders, to come forward for just a moment to talk about the project itself.
All right, Bob, are you?
Want to have any questions with me?
We'll let, we'll get Chris up here, and then we'll, maybe we'll have some questions. Bob, you've now yielded your three minutes, so, Chris, why don't you come on up, and we'll give you three minutes, okay?
You know, since the last time I was here, I think somebody has raised this podium. I'm gonna need my glasses.
Okay, and?
Chris Anthony Sanders, 1620 Duke of Windsor Road in Virginia Beach. Good evening, Mayor Frame, Vice Mayor Burford, members of City Council, and City Manager Jones. As I mentioned, I'm Chris Sanders. I'm the other half of the development team for the 21st Street Gant Station Project. So, thank you for letting me take just a few minutes of your time to talk about that project tonight. As I was listening to Bob talk about the previous projects we developed within the City of Norfolk, I was quickly adding up the total value of those projects, and for the property Bob listed, the total value's somewhere in excess of $300 million and a little over 1.6 million total square feet that we've developed in the city. I'm sure you'll agree, this is a quite sizable private investment, and we hope that you also believe these projects have provided a first-class development, as well as added significantly to the overall value of real estate within the City of Norfolk. I can tell you that we couldn't have completed these projects without a commitment of the city to work with us on the various developments to ensure their success. We could not have completed these projects without the City of Norfolk being a resourceful partner, so a sincere thank you for the leadership and support that you've given us in the past to help those projects come to fruition. Tonight, we're here before you to propose another development that we also believe will result in a high-quality property. We believe this development will jump-start a significant improvement in the property values, as well as the location desirability along the west 21st Street corridor between Colley Avenue and Hampton Boulevard where the project's to be located. I believe you've been briefed on the project extensively in informal session of council, so I'll just hit on a few highlights of the, of the project. The project is going to be called Gant Station, and it's proposed to be a horizontal mixed-use development with multiple tenants. The primary uses will be medical office, as well as retail. There's going to be two separate buildings built on the property, the first being two stories consisting of approximately 26,560 square feet, which will be for medical office use, and the other one-story building of approximately 23,700 gross square feet for retail space. Bond secures will locate a number of specialty medical practices within the MOB component, and there's representative of bond secures here tonight that'll provide you with a little more detail on those specifics. For the retail component, there'll be a well-known, highly-desirable gourmet grocer that will occupy the majority of the available retail space, with the balance of retail being available to small users. When you add up the numbers for the total development cost, including the building improvements, the furniture, the fixtures, and all of the equipment necessary to support the proposed uses, this project will total some $17.5 million in private investment dollars. While bond secures will speak to their jobs created from their medical uses, the retail component alone will create some 80 to 90 new employment opportunities. When you add this to the proposed estimate of employment opportunities that bond secures will bring, that's some 130 new jobs for the city. There's going to be a very tangible benefit in our mind to the businesses, not only immediately surrounding the property, but all along the 21st Street Business District community, that'll benefit from the increased customer base that will come to the new development. The city will capture retail sales that are currently being expended outside the city when the gourmet grocer will bring to this development opens. And as importantly, the development of the project will place back onto the city's real estate tax roll an underutilized parcel of land that has been vacant and a revenue drain for several years now. It also removes the continued risk and exposure of a blighted property that sits there today. We believe the proposed uses are the highest and best uses for the property. We believe the size of the project, as it's proposed today, best suits the property size that's included within the development. Proposed tenants being credit-worthy tenants.
Chris, you're gonna have, was that three minutes for Mr. Sanders, the bell that went off? Okay, Chris, I think we're gonna have to let you wind up. Any questions?
We're available for questions either now or?
Chris, let me put one to you. The council's had a briefing on this proposal, and there's some concern, there are a few concerns. Every council member seems to have their own, but I, but one of them is, is how you're gonna address the, the asphalt in the front of the supermarket as it comes up to the street, and how you might shield that, and what your, you know, if the, if our design review team were to ask you to put a low-rise wall along there, I mean?
We think that would be a good idea.
Okay.
We, we haven't done enough design studies yet to really get into that level of detail, but some type of landscaping buffer, or hardscaping buffer, as you're talking, would make a lot of sense.
Okay, any other questions from?
Do you have the financing?
I'm sorry?
Do you have the financing?
We do not have financing in place, though we've talked to three different local lenders who are interested. Actually, they're begging to be financiers for the project, so.
So, we're gonna be assured that we won't have the same issue that happened with our last effort in 2008?
I don't know that there's anything in life that is 100% guarantee, but I'd bet the ranch on this one.
If you got approval, what, when would you be breaking ground?
You know, there's several steps that have to happen, not only rezoning of the property, the design review process, as well as the design process. Currently, Barkley, my best guess is it would be late summer to early September, October, before we'd be shovel-ready for the ground. Now, we'd hopefully take the building down in advance of that. If shovel-ready for the individual uses is September 1, we'd probably start 45 days earlier to take the building down.
Okay. All right, thanks very much.
Thank you very much.
Richard Levin. Okay, Richard, we got some guests here from the school system.
No problem.
Wait, 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 right, wait, right. If you, if you want to stay, you're welcome to stay. I don't, don't feel because you walked in the door, you have to wait till the end, though.
Well, we have a budget piece coming, so that's why.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine, that's.
There's no conflict.
No, 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 it's no conflict, and we're glad to have you here, I'm just, no, Richard, go ahead, no, go ahead. Sorry.
Thank you, and good evening. Tonight, I'm pretty certain that you'll all probably come in with your minds pretty well made up on how you're gonna vote, and we're gonna go through the formality, which we appreciate as citizens, of having an opportunity to make, have voices heard, so that we can go out, back to our homes with some peace. But I'm gonna plead with y'all tonight to this honorable council to please listen and act on the behalf of the taxpayers of this city. I've just distributed a 2007 RFP that was prepared by the City of Norfolk, and included, if you pay attention to the tabs, I believe it's page seven in the piece that's in front of it, an appraisal, an appraisal that was prepared by the City of Norfolk in the tune of $5,442,000. And that was prepared by the City of Norfolk. It's a $5 million, $5.5 million property. And tonight, no one is questioning the ability of these developers. I have a great deal of respect, and I think anybody would. But it's not about that, it's about the taxpayers, and it's about making a decision tonight to sell a very valuable piece of property in the most flourishing business corridor, certainly one, in all of Hampton Roads. And what are we doing? We're being presented with an offer of $250,000, which I dare say, property hasn't been sold that cheap in Norfolk, Virginia, on 21st Street, probably since 1911. That's almost four acres. So, I know y'all had this meeting with the Department of Economic Development here, and they're wonderful with numbers, and they can spin numbers, numbers are wonderful. But I will also call your attention to the back page of that book that ran in the Virginian Pilot this past Sunday, where the City of Suffolk is bringing a Panera's, the first drive-through ever to Suffolk, and with another restaurant on the, the plan. The Department of Economic Development could have easily spent 80 jobs, 100 jobs, $400, $4 million worth of revenue to the city in Suffolk, but no, you know what they did? They sold that property for $1 million. It's one acre in Suffolk. Something's wrong. This is 21st Street. We've worked hard, not just us, but for the last 50 years or so, committed citizens have worked their hearts out to make Gant so that Bond Secor, Fresh Market, Trader Joe, they want to be there because it is flourishing. Guys, we need money, and ladies, we need money for the schools. We're desperate. We're talking about raising real estate taxes next year. Please, this is an opportunity. No one's gonna not think for a moment that these gentlemen cannot deliver, they can, but there's other developers, and they may very well get the property, but they'll pay a fair price for it, and that's all we're asking tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jack Plumgren.
Good evening, I'm Jack Plumgren, and my residence is, or my residence is 200 College Place, my business is at 1611 Colley Avenue in Norfolk, and I, I felt like I had to get up here and say after Richard, amen, because I think really the concern we have, we love the project. I mean, I'll be honest with you, I don't want to see us lose this project. This is an important project for Gant, it's an important project for the Business Association of Gant, and, and I'd love to see us get it, but frankly, by the same token, I think that what do we have to lose by putting it out as an RFP? I mean, I, I don't know where the developers, these developers would go if you put it out as an RFP, but we, as the citizens of Norfolk, would then have a, a fair estimate of what the property is worth. And frankly, that's our only concern. I, I love the project, I'm not a designer, so I don't really care which way the building faces, and whether it has a wall out in front of it or not. It's gonna be a great project, and I'm sure whoever does it is gonna do a wonderful job with it. But I, as a citizen of Norfolk, taxpayer of Norfolk, and is head of the Gant Business Association, just want to make sure that we're getting the fairest price we can for what Richard points out is a part-of-town, that, that frankly, if there is a part-of-town you shouldn't have to discount, it's on 21st Street in Gant, so, thanks.
Thank you. Clark Olson.
My name is Clark Olson, I live at 1217 South Fairwater Drive in Norfolk. Mayor Frame, Vice Mayor Burford, and other honorable members of City Council, thank you for the opportunity to briefly speak and address the matter of Gant Station. This, as I said, my name is Clark Olson, and I'm also the owner of Clark Nursery. This past spring, I opened a garden center at 824 West 21st Street. My property is immediately to the east of Gant Station. We'll share the border. I would like to say three things about the proposed development. One, I am in the process of purchasing 824 West 21st Street. My property is a little under an acre in size and runs from 21st Street all the way back to the railroad tracks. I've already put in about $100,000 into the property, and I'm about to submit plans for further improving the property. I welcome anyone who will develop the adjacent property. The proposed development will increase traffic to my business, improving the property will help rid the area of vagrancy, theft, and blight, and will complete the improvement of 20, of the 21st Street corridor to Hampton Boulevard, so I am in favor of developing the site. However, at the $250,000 net price the city is selling Gant Station for, I can tell you that I am paying over three times that amount for a property that is one-quarter the size of Gant Station. Based on what I'm paying for the property, Gant Station should be selling for about $2.5 to $3 million. Individuals here tonight, including myself, have submitted offers in writing to the city manager on part or all the acreage of Gant Station at fair-market prices. As none of us has received a written reply, I wonder whether or not members of council have been made aware of all offers on the property. I support those here tonight requesting that the property be put out for an RFP, in order that all offers are a matter of public record, and that the citizens of Norfolk receive the highest value for the property. Third, and finally, I've read, I have read that the city is contemplating raising the real estate tax next year. We already have one of the highest tax rates in our area. Why are you selling a $2.5 to $3 million property for such a small amount, and then turning around and asking the citizens to pay more taxes? No argument has been made by the developer as to why they might need a multimillion-dollar subsidy. Nobody has said this project will go away without such a subsidy. The argument has not been made because it does not exist. All that this subsidy is doing is putting more money in the developer's pocket at the taxpayer's expense. You are all the elected stewards of our great city. It is the citizens that own the property. It is the fiduciary responsibility of all members of council to see that the citizens receive the highest dollar value for the property. For this reason, I also ask that the vote to sell the property be tabled in order to determine its fair-market price. Thank you for allowing me to address the council.
Thank you. Rebecca McMahon.
Rebecca McMahon, 101 West Ever Avenue, Norfolk, Virginia. Good evening, Mayor Frame, members of City Council, and City Manager Jones. My name is Rebecca McMahon, and I am assistant to the CEO for DePaul Medical Center. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I want to share Bond Secor's support and desire to move forward with our chosen developer, Stanton Partners and Robinson Development Group, on the Gant Station project as a major tenant in this exciting horizontal mixed-use project. Bond Secor remains committed to our 157-year-old ministry at DePaul Medical Center and in the Norfolk community. Over the past four years, we've made a series of investments totaling more than $20 million in programs and services at DePaul. We plan to continue to expand our ministry in the City of Norfolk. Additionally, DePaul just broke ground on a developer-financed 103,000-square-foot medical office building. In that building, Bond Secor will make a $15 million investment in a state-of-the-art cancer center and physician practices. This is another step toward an eventual, eventual replacement facility on the current campus, something Bond Secor, Virginia, remains committed to. In addition to investments on its current campus, Bond Secor continues to focus on building its physician presence in the DePaul service area. This is in response to an overwhelming need of primary care providers in the DePaul market. The next priority is a site to meet the needs of the Gant neighborhood, a site search that began over three years ago. The services being planned for Gant Station are designed to support the growth of additional primary care providers, enhance urgent care services, and integrate new services of physical therapy, sports medicine, and occupational medicine. The property is a flat canvas, and we can build a suit which will allow us to provide the most beneficial patient care experience. The expansion of primary care and the addition of new physical therapy, sports medicine, and occupational medicine services will add over 14 new jobs with a salary range of $30,000 to $78,000. In conclusion, we at Bond Secor are looking forward to growing and supporting the Gant community with our continued investment. Bond Secor's expansion will help fulfill primary care needs of the Gant residents, in addition to creating jobs for the neighborhood. We are behind our schedule, our desired schedule, in providing quality healthcare services to the immediate Gant neighborhoods, so we hope that with your support tonight, the project can move forward quickly. We look forward to working with Stanton Partners and Robinson Development Group to bring this much-needed valuable care to Gant in Norfolk. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sure.
Ma'am, excuse me, this is a question that I had in the informal session. Correct me if I'm wrong, it's my understanding that there are physicians across the street in an urgent care facility, there's also PT that's offered across the street, am I correct?
Correct.
Who own, do you, does Bond Secor's own that property? Or are you renting?
We are renting.
And I take it that those physicians, PT, are going to move across the street to this new facility?
The PT is not Bond Secor, but the physicians will be relocating, they're kind of cramped for space, and so this allows them to grow.
I mean, I've been in the offices for, for various, for work, and I've seen it is, it's a, it's a group of offices basically just linked together. The PT that's currently there, that's, are you gonna move in motion?
Yes.
Now, in motion's gonna come new to the area of that 21st Street corridor. The current PT that's there, is that not part of the Bond Secor's network?
No.
It's a separate contract, I assume?
It's just existing next to us, I don't think we're affiliated at all.
Oftentimes, there's a chiropractor that's also involved with that group that gets some, does, there's some referrals back and forth, is he moving with you?
No.
No. Do you know what is going to happen to the current space that's involved, once you all vacate that area?
I do not, no.
And it sits between, I think, Isaiah, Isaiah Court and, and 21st Street, does that sound about right, just so, so people understand where I'm talking?
Yes.
Do you know who owns that property?
I don't, but I believe some people with me might, so I can defer to Will.
That's okay, I'm sure Richard Levin knows.
Okay.
All right, that's all I have.
Is, is in motion moving from Ford's Corner?
No, it's a brand-new facility, so it's gonna be additional to our service.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Alan Sullivan. Okay, thank you. Irene O'Brien, if you don't, okay.
Hi, my name is Irene O'Brien. I am, live at 833 Brandon Avenue, which, for your reference, is right up Core Street, about four blocks away from this general area of this, where the development will be. Thank you very much for allowing me to come and speak today. I am in support of this project. This area has once was referred to by City Council as the Forgotten Triangle, and it's nice to finally be paid attention to. However, I do have a problem with the fact that with all the development that's already been going on in this area, there has been a significant increase, that there's already people there developing, and yet they didn't get these big, you know, breaks on their prices for property, you know? People should pay fair-market value, but to be paying this much of a discount is phenomenal. And it concerns me as somebody who lives in the area, too. You know, if I owned property on that street, I would just be furious. But secondly, also, I have concerns about, I don't know if anybody's even mentioned about what's gonna happen with the traffic. I'm assuming this is gonna bring a lot of people to this area, which is great, I want it. But however, I assume with this big discount that maybe the development is also including maybe redesigning the traffic pattern, hence is that the reason for the big discount? So, you know, if, if, if the city's gonna go forward for offering this price without doing an RFP, I would assume that, you know, something else has to be included in just giving this land and having it developed for this area that's in need of this development. And also, I, I'm gonna ask, if the city's willing to give away property at such a great discount, can, is there a list of any other Gant properties that the city owns for sale? Because I would love this discount as well, so I'd be very much interested in getting this discount, so I ask to rethink it and maybe putting this up for bid. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Klaus Heileman, Klaus, if you want to speak.
Good evening, I'm Klaus Heileman, I reside at 4545 Commerce Street in Virginia Beach, but I spend most of my time on 21st Street operating the Palace Shops, Palace Station, and Decorum Furniture, where I've been for the past 37 years. The proposed project with Bond Secor and Fresh Market will be a great asset to 21st Street, and I certainly support that aspect of the, of the project. However, some of the details of the proposed land sale are troublesome, and I would like to request the City Council reconsider some of these details. The 21st Street corridor is Norfolk's second-most-successful commercial corridor, and has been for the past three years, and it has ranked in the top five for many, many years. It only is right now behind downtown Norfolk. So, I question the wisdom of selling approximately four acres of land in this vibrant corridor for an amount that nets out to $250,000. This is the same piece of- This is the same piece of land that the city valued at about $5.5 million in 2007. What happened to make it drop so much? The Ghent Commercial District has been very successfully redeveloped through private enterprise. There is hardly any property for sale, and the very few properties that are for sale are priced at a premium. So again, I question why this big price drop. If a developer wanted to assemble close to four acres in Ghent, it would be extremely difficult and a very, very cumbersome process, yet Norfolk is fortunate enough to own in its inventory such an assembly of land. It should not be sold so cheap. I have heard the argument that the only way the developer can make this project work, the only way they can make the numbers work is if they can get the land at this price. However, I've also heard that these tenants that are proposed for the project are market-rate tenants. If the tenants are market-rate, why should the land not be market-rate? It has been mentioned several times that this should go back out for proposal, and I certainly support the idea of either putting the land back for a request for proposal or sell it at fair market value. Ghent is doing really well. The numbers prove that it's doing well, so let's not give it away. Let's get it for fair market value. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Blunt Hunter.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. I'm Blunt Hunter. I'm a Norfolk resident, 1202 Westover Avenue. Tonight, I'm speaking as an individual. No one has asked me to appear, and I'm not being compensated. I'm here tonight to support you in your evaluation of a specific development proposal for the redevelopment of the former senior center parcel on 21st Street. The property is blighted and long overdue for redevelopment. While not without liabilities, the parcel is strategically located, and redevelopment can add to the vitality of the Ghent Commercial area and the city's tax base. As you may know, in 2009, the Department of Development engaged my firm to prepare a third-party evaluation of the capacity of the Ghent grocery market to support a specialty grocery store. At that time, the leading candidate was the Fresh Market. Tonight, I would like to at least let you know that from my perspective, market changes since 2009 make the Ghent market an even stronger candidate for Fresh Market than it was back in 2009. First and most important, the opportunity for a specialty grocery store is stronger now. Fresh Market's continued interest reflects the strength of Ghent Grocery Market. For more than a decade, the Fresh Market evaluated multiple site options before selecting the senior center as their preferred site. They do not see a fixed pod being sliced into smaller pieces. They see a robust grocery market that's underserved in their areas of expertise and specialization, and they're prepared to invest capital and store build-out and pay commensurate rent with their type of business for that privilege. Here are some of the reasons for their optimism. All 850 new units of housing proposed within the Ghent Grocery Market in 1999 have been built, and there are at least 600 more planned or under construction near downtown or in Ghent. If those units were all in one neighborhood, they would support the equivalent of almost a half of a whole new grocery store, so that's a lot of new spending. Harris Teeter's sales in their expanded store appear to be much stronger than anticipated because they're bringing people into the neighborhood. That's a great model for the Fresh Market. The unfortunate closing of the market at Harbor Heights has shifted grocery spending into Ghent, creating an unexpected windfall for those grocery stores. I believe the sales transfer is approximately equal to the total new sales anticipated by Fresh Market. Finally, according to newspaper reports, plans for a Farm Fresh-anchored shopping center adjacent to OD's University Village have been shelved. This was the single greatest threat to grocery store sales performance in the Ghent neighborhood from a preemptive location. Bottom line, my modeling suggested that up to 50% of the sales at Fresh Market would not be reallocated from existing stores, but we'd be new to the city and we'd be new tax dollars. My second message, very short, very simple. Land values, appraisals are specific to the time that they were made. They change over time. Sometimes they go down, sometimes they go up. Land values in the development process can be the critical element in making a deal work. The developer has little control over market rent, little control over construction costs, little control over operating costs, but it's the land value that can make or break a deal. Sometimes you hear developers say, "I just couldn't get the numbers to pan out." It usually has to do with either the land or the construction cost. After several attempts, it seems that an experienced development team has offered a new proposal with specific rent and construction costs that support this land value that has been offered. That's very important, and more important than people who come out of the woodwork and say, "I'll give you X for this," without specific development plans of their own. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hunter. Okay, I think that's all the, the names of the folks who have signed up to speak. I don't know if I missed anybody or not, because I think we got to everybody. Also see Michael Kerner back there, the head of Bonsacor's Hampton Road, CEO here. Michael, good to have you here. Any comments, any statements, anybody? I think we're ready to vote, and I've got a couple of things I'd like to say, but I, we can wait till we just vote one at a time and comment, so. Put it on, okay. Just get it on the floor. Okay, call the vote.
I have an ordinance authorizing the land disposition and development contract to be entered into with 21st Street Partners, L.C., and authorizing the conveyance of real property as provided for in the LDDC. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford? Uh, Mr. Protegira?
Paul, if I could comment?
Yes, sir.
And Paul, I need to apologize. As you know, this has been very troubling to me, and, and I want this to succeed. Of all the ironies, I think that everybody has said they want this to succeed. But I had initially staked out a position that I believe I would be disingenuous, and I think part of being a leader is you have to lead and be consistent. And when the why came and we dealt with that particular issue, I think I was the only one who voted against it. I think I voted against it because the issue of competition and the why coming in across from One Life and other fitness facilities that are in the area. And I see the same thing here, and this is very troubling for me to, to wake up in the middle of the night and to think about this. I see it as very troubling that without the payment of the full value, what is full value is a question, but without payment of what I think all of us consider full value in this, especially with Mr. Stanton, when you come and you tell us you have $300 million in assets that you've developed, and then we're sitting here talking about whether or not $250,000 is correct or not. I have a hard time working that out, those numbers out, and then we hear that the, that banks are falling over themselves to give you this deal. I have a hard time with that, and why. I think Harris Teeter's been a wonderful corporate citizen, and they are within, not eyesight of this particular project, but they are very close. You could stand on this project and basically see a food line, at least the back of it. You could stand on the corner or on the sidewalk, and you can see a Gene Walters marketplace. And this will be the fourth project. Now, some people have said, "Well, you're the proponent of Ward's Corner. What have you done at Ward's Corner?" But you've done the same, and we haven't. We haven't given the Perrys funds such as this to make what they're doing happen. Are we doing some infrastructure? I have no problem with infrastructure, but I do have, this has given me a lot of heartburn, and I talked to Paul about it, and I said, "Paul, I want this to, to go through. If it doesn't go through on my vote, then I'd consider even changing it," to be in all honesty. But I've staked out a position on this, and, and I will tell you that, you know, I think we all keep our minds open till the end, and I know, Richard, you may have said that we may have our minds made up, and, and frankly, I think I've flip-flopped on this more than anybody, and maybe I'm not being consistent to myself, but I think I have to be consistent to the city and positions I've staked out. So I cannot, in good conscience, in the positions that I've staked out in the past, vote for this, so my, and I'm sorry, I do support Chuck Rigney, and Chuck, if you're to get this job full-time, I want you to have this position full-time. Has nothing to do with how you've negotiated this, so please, don't see that in any manner. I do support your office, but I can't vote for this because of previous positions I staked out, so I am no.
All right. Mr. Riddick? Mr. Smigel?
Just a quick comment. I appreciate all the citizens coming down tonight to give us their opinion, and I, I've stated this before to the Ghent community on the 7-Eleven deal, on the Chick-fil-A deal, that this is not a, a new topic. Apparently, this has been brewing in the Ghent community for a while, and it's just troublesome to me that there are eight people on City Council, and it seems like that there's never any communication with those of us who are on the other side of the city, and we do represent you, we pass votes that attack you, and it's just troubling to me that, other than Richard, that tonight is the night that I find out that there's opposition to this. And I, I would hope that we just have better communication, and that if there is community members that are against this, that you come and talk to us and let us know what's going on, because I have a letter, we got a letter today from the Ghent Business Association saying that they support this, and so I, I'm confused of, I believe it was, was it Ghent Business Association?
It was in the Ghent Business Association. You must not have read all.
It's RFP, though.
It said, "We support it, but we require our..." Yeah.
I think it said you would rather have had.
Rather have.
Rather have had.
Yeah.
I, I'm, but anyway, my, my point is, I just, I, I, you know, it is troubling to hear this. I, I think, I agree with the argument that it's easy to come out with a $1.5 million, $2 million offer, but then the property sits looking the way that it does, and there is a solid plan here for a project that is going to bring jobs and tax dollars back into the city and help with a property that I know, because I used to live on Harrington, that has caused problems in the community. And so I, I believe that, I do have some heartburn as well, Andy. I just wish that we had more discussion on this before today, but I am going to support the project. I vote aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Can I read that? Because...
No, no, I, no, thanks very much. Okay.
Nobody likes to shop at a grocery store more than I do. Tommy, I share some of your concerns about not being apprised, and I happen to represent this area. None of the developers had felt that it was important to come to me to talk to me about this project. That's okay. I can figure this stuff out on my own. I think Mr. Blunt had some really very prudent issues, although he ended up saying that maybe developers have to squeeze the numbers a little bit, but I think he's right. This is a very popular proposal. People want this to come. This is hot. We shouldn't give this away as a bargain. And I have to tell you, I cannot sleep with myself after Mr. Clark talked and talked about how he's paying so much more and he's struggling to try to get that nursery going. And I, I just, in all conscience, cannot give this property away when Mr. Clark is paying at least three times more for a smaller project. So my vote is no.
Ms. Williams?
I vote aye to support the project. A couple of things that have come out of this has been issues regarding what is for sale and isn't for sale and how that information is communicated to the public, and I think that we need to have a clear-cut way, whatever it is, on the internet, multiple RSPs, RFPs. I don't really care what it is, as long as the public, business owners, developers, whomever, as long as they're aware that we have property for sale, to me, it's not quite enough to say, "Well, it's been out for RFP before, and, you know, nothing happened to it," and, you know, I would say, as a, as a Realtor, that, you know, anything is for sale, and everything is for sale for price, but I think that we need to have a clear-cut way that we communicate with the public what all of our properties are for sale. If, if an RFP is, you know, out there, what is it that we're looking for so that we don't have miscommunication between what we want, what's available, and what the expectation is from, from the citizens? But seeing, seeing the project, the potential of the project, and seeing what has sat there vacant for a number of years, I do support the project, and I, I do hope that it will be everything that Chuck and economic development and the developer has promised the city.
Mr. Winn?
Yeah, let me say something. I've obviously represented this area for 12 years. It's a very special area. I've seen in the last 10 years, somebody say they didn't know the property's for sale. We've had at least four proposals. There's been two or three different signs up there with what may or may not happen, none of which has come to fruition. I've talked to bankers about how this will affect the values. I've asked for independent appraisers. I've got one here who's written, and, and all of them have said it won't negatively affect the values. One of them says, "Real estate appraisers and real estate assessors will not rely on the, rely on this sale as a benchmark to value other properties. There will not be a negative impact on values in the area. Should the city sell this property at a discount for economic or reasons other than the immediate dollar volume, dollar amount received?" Bankers have told me the same thing. We're not, we wouldn't do anything as this council, and I know I wouldn't, to diminish the hard work that the people have done in the community or the values. We've spent millions of dollars on street shapes, verges, and what have you to try to uphold this special area. We look all over, you know, we had the example of Suffolk. We look at Virginia Beach at Town Center, which is a hot area. They just gave $16 million incentive to a company to move their people out there. That's valuable property that they're, that they're dealing with. I think this is the right project. I don't think we sit around for another four or five years and wait for something to happen, and I, I am confident that once this is built, the values, even after the zoning changes, the values will escalate considerably for everybody in the Ghent area. I vote aye.
Mr. Frame?
Yeah, I, I agree with, with Barclay, and I've been representing Ghent for literally since, since I've been on council, and then when we went to the ward suit. And I'm going to tell you why I'm going to vote aye on, on this project as well. It has been the subject of at least two, maybe, at least two RFPs since 2007. The city's been trying to sell this property actively since 2007. We've had at least two, three, maybe, somebody said we've had, maybe this is the fourth offer for this project. Two times, we accepted offers, actually. We seriously considered them, both of them. Neither one of those could come to fruition. Times had something to do with it. The economy had things to do with it, but this property's been on the market for a long time. I mean, you know, five years now that we've been trying to get something done. We actually, and while it's been there, this, the, the building that's on it has, has constantly, continually eroded. I mean, it is a blight on that property. It is going to take hundreds of thousands of dollars just to take the property down. This appraisal was done back in, the very top of the market, back in May of '07. The building actually had some use to it at that time and has none now. It's been the subject of severe vandalism. It has, you couldn't save the building, and part of the, of the appraisal is predicated on the building having substantial value. None of that's true now. We've had other developers try to come in and do things. They've not been able to pull it off. The city has a record, whether you like it or not, of discounting properties that it owns in order to spur development, and there is $17.5 million of private money that will go into this deal. The assessed value of the city, because of an aggressive economic development policy of the, of the city of Norfolk, it's doubled, basically, in the last seven or eight years, and it's because the city has been aggressively trying to spur development like this and to create jobs. This deal is no different. It's probably better in some ways because it sits up against the, one of the most heavily-traveled railroad lines in, in the, the coal line, maybe in the Commonwealth, maybe in the country. It leads to the fastest-loading coal facility in the northern hemisphere. There not but so much that's going to happen on this property, but believe me, some people have thought maybe they could just put a commercial strip of retail, the retail buildings, just to block the, the... the retail buildings, just to block the view of the rail line, and then park everybody in front. We're getting better than that. We're going to get a little bit of a high-rise office building, which the, which will greatly in order the benefit of Gant. These professional jobs that will occur there is something that the Gant community will, you know, can take advantage of as they, you know, for their restaurants and as they sell, and as folks come to take advantage of the bonds of core services. I think that'll be a benefit. Clearly, fresh market has a special place as in form a supermarket. It's different in kind than, as my wife tells me, than some of the other supermarkets there. It will be, you know, a clear addition to the community. Nobody struggles with this any more than his council does, and, you know, I include myself there. I try to get every nickel out of this stuff for the community, but I know that sometimes you have to spend money to make money. And the developers that have been there before, when we exacted high prices out of them, could not deliver. We, the EDA, the Economic Development Office, has examined the numbers that Mr. Stanton and Chris Saunders have given to us. We've looked at the return they expect to make. We think it is fair under the circumstances, but modest. And it sits really between Hampton Boulevard and Colley Avenue. That is, and a railroad track. I mean, it is a site that is crying for development, but it is not the best. And this is the best proposal we've had. We could say no and wait for another four or five years, but I think the community, these are the people I've talked to, would like to see this thing happen. And I am confident, and I agree with what Barclay said. All the values, the people who have property in Gant today, their values will be better tomorrow and after this project goes forward. And so I'm going to vote aye. Okay?
Okay. All right. Thank you very much, and we appreciate everybody coming down. And that concludes the public hearing, so we'll move to the consent agenda. Would any member of the council like to have any of these matters considered separately? All right, call the roll, please.
Approve the consent agenda. Mr. Burford, Mr. Protogiru, Mr. Riddick, Mr. Smigle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R1.
R1 is matter of a public hearing on Potter's House by Carlos Morales that would amend the general plan to change the land use designation from commercial office to institutional, and to change the zoning from C2 to conditional institutional on property located at 6820 North Military Highway. This matter was, the public hearing was closed, and it was continued twice. And it's back before you tonight. I have two ordinances for it. First is an ordinance to amend the general plan of Norfolk 1992 so as to change the land use designation for property located at 6820 North Military Highway from commercial office to institutional.
Just, Mr. Morales is here to answer questions, if anybody has any. All right. Thank you.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R2.
I have a 1A on this, too, Mr. President, and that's an ordinance to rezone property located at 6820 North Military Highway from C1 to conditional I and 1. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Now R2.
An ordinance granting a special exception to permit the operation of an eating and drinking establishment on property located at 5601 East Virginia Beach Boulevard. By 6-0 vote, planning commission recommends approval. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R3.
An ordinance granting a special exception to permit the operation of an entertainment establishment on property located at 4820 Hampton Boulevard. By 6-0 vote, planning commission recommends approval.
Mr. Rushman Patel is here to answer questions, if we have any. Mr. Patel, are you here? Okay. Thank you. All right, call the roll. Thank you.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Mr. Cowes is here as well. I should have mentioned that. Okay. R4.
An ordinance granting a special exception to permit the operation of a used merchandise sales establishment located at 415 North Military Highway, Unit C1. By 6-0 vote, planning commission recommends approval.
Mr. Johnson is here to answer questions, if there are any. Okay?
Mr. Cowes at this one.
9:00 AM to 7:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, and close on Sunday.
Yes, we did the last one.
Okay, that's good. Thank you. That's no question. All right. Call the roll.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt.
Mr. Atkinson, Paul Atkinson's here. Paul, I didn't, nice to see you, to answer questions, if any. Okay.
Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
No.
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R5.
I blanked there for a second.
Okay.
R5 is an ordinance granting a special exception to permit the operation of a commercial drive-through facility on property located at 230 East Little Creek Road. By 6-0 vote, planning commission recommends approval.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
I, this is, and I see Martin's here, so he probably knows. This is the, they're going to drive through, sorry, Frank, I didn't mean the... They're going to drive through, this is going to be going through a passenger side of the car? I'm confused by the diagram. They're adding a drive-through pharmacy.
Yes, sir. The way this is configured, it would be going by the driver's side.
Driver's side, okay. Maybe I'm turned around on the drawing.
It could be the way the drawing is located in here, but it just does meet all ordinance requirements.
Is it sending it through a tube? That's what it is. You can't tell that on the thing. I brought this concern up. I agree with Dr. Whibley. Anytime we have any type of drive-throughs, I'm just wondering what kind of screening we have through here. I know it's not fast food, but I'm just, the ugliness of drive-throughs and cars sitting, what are we doing to screen this?
By ordinance, we do require drive-throughs to be screened from all residential uses, as well as from street rights of way. We don't, this one is going to be internal to the site, so it doesn't, and I think there's a...
It's a railroad track.
The railroad track is the other side, so we would not require additional screening here.
Frank, be careful. Looks like Mr. Thomas is trying to take your job away.
That's my, I didn't see Frank sitting over there. I saw Martin, so...
Martin was working his way up.
Okay, any other questions?
I know he's the mayor of Ward's Corner, so I wanted to make sure I acknowledge that. Oh, I'm sorry, Andy.
All right, call the roll.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. 5A.
5A is an ordinance granting a special exception to permit a retail goods establishment to operate after midnight on property located at 230 East Little Creek Road. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R5B.
An ordinance granting a special exception to permit the sale of alcoholic beverages for off-premises consumption on property located at 230 East Little Creek Road. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R6.
An ordinance granting a special exception to operate an entertainment establishment on property located at 330 West 22nd Street, Suites 104 and 105. By 6-0 vote, planning commission recommends approval. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R7.
An ordinance granting a special exception to permit off-lot parking on property located at 4396 Pretty Lake Avenue. By 5-0 vote, planning commission recommends approval. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R8.
An ordinance granting a special exception to operate an entertainment establishment on property located at 1309 Raleigh Avenue. By 6-0 vote, planning commission recommends approval. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R9.
An ordinance granting a special exception to permit the operation of an eating and drinking establishment on property located at 738 West 22nd Street, Suites 7 through 9. By 6-0 vote, planning commission recommends approval. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R10.
An ordinance granting permission to Oats Food Service 2 LLC, trading to Scotty Quicks, to encroach 5 feet 3 inches into the right-of-way of Granby Street and approving the terms and conditions of the encroachment agreement. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Frame?
Aye. R11.
An ordinance authorizing the purchase from Moss Oil Company, Inc., previously known as Moss Dennis Oil Company, of certain property located in the city for the sum of $450,000 in accordance with the terms and conditions of the attached purchase and sale agreement, and authorizing the expenditure of a sum of up to $460,000 from funds heretofore appropriated to pay the purchase price and other transaction costs. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye. Mr., I've got a question. We did put a demolition. That's in there. That's, okay. All right.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R13.
There's some more money from O.C. too, Tommy.
An ordinance authorizing the purchase from Marion E. Kelly III and Marie M. Kelly of certain property located in the city for the sum of $650,000 in accordance with the terms and conditions of the purchase and sale agreement, and authorizing the expenditure of a sum of up to $660,000 from funds heretofore appropriated to pay the purchase price and other transaction costs. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Again, I want to thank the administration, but just to let you know what this is, these purchases are towards. This is towards Broad Creek Station, so, all right.
How many acres is that?
Seventeen.
Are we done?
No, we're not. You'll get a...
Yes, we are.
You'll get a couple more of these.
All right, okay. We're done. So I've got my money back now, right? Word five is set. We're good?
Yeah, y'all all right.
Mr. Burford, your vote is aye.
Yeah, my vote, definitely.
Mr. Protogiru?
You're going to have to do some working on me if we're going to keep doing this. Aye.
The money's in the budget.
It doesn't matter.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R14.
An ordinance approving a revocable license agreement between the City of Norfolk and Genuine Parts Company for the use of certain city-owned property located at 1188 Lance Road for the provision of attorney-on-site parts operation. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R15.
Fourteen, Mr. President.
Fourteen, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. An ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale by the City of Norfolk, Virginia, of up to $120 million in general obligation refunding bonds to refund earlier bond issues of the city. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R15.[1413.41]
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
R15.
An ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of up to $100 million in water revenue refunding bonds to refund earlier bond issues issued by the city. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
R16.
An ordinance authorizing the execution of amendments to certain financing agreements relating to loans from the Virginia Water Facilities Revolving Fund to the City of Norfolk and amendments to certain general obligation wastewater bonds to decrease the interest rate thereon. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
R19.
An ordinance accepting the dedication of a utility easement over certain property owned by WBG Financial Investment and Capital LLC and authorizing the city manager to accept the deed of easement on behalf of the city. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
R20.
An ordinance accepting a grant in the amount of $44,181 from the Bureau of Justice Assistance for the FY 2012 State Criminal Alien Assistance Program and appropriating and authorizing the expenditure of the grant funds by the sheriff for various purposes for the program. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
R21.
An ordinance accepting $49,969.15 from the Schools and Libraries Division of the Universal Service Fund E-Rate Grant Program and appropriating and authorizing the expenditure of $49,969.15 for telecommunications and technology services for the Norfolk Public Library. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
R22.
An ordinance accepting a grant award of up to $6,677.07 from the U.S. Department of Justice Bulletproof Vest Program, appropriating and authorizing the expenditure of the funds for the program to purchase bulletproof vests for the Police Department and Sheriff's Department and authorizes the expenditure of a local cash match of $6,677.07 from the Police Department and the Sheriff's Department for the purchase of the vests. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
R23.
An ordinance accepting one laser-driven fire extinguisher training system valued at $10,840 from the Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation grant awarded to Norfolk Fire Rescue for hands-on extinguisher training and authorizing the use of the training system by Department of Fire Rescue. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?